We'd like to call the meeting to order, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. Roll call, Mr. Lundberg.
Bow.
Yes.
Bodie.
Yep.
Saxor.
Yes.
Talker.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
With that, if there are no changes that need to be made on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented tonight. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests tonight. That takes us to approval of the minutes from our regular meetings on August 10th and August 24th. If there are no questions or concerns on those, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No community input tonight, so that takes us to our financial items. Bills and claims, Mr. Lundberg.
I would entertain any questions from the Board of Education members. Well, I had a couple items noted. In the myriad of bills that we have presented to you tonight, a lot of our summer projects are completed, so I just noted some of those on page two. Journey Group Companies, asphalt repairs, $33,702. On page five, Design Crete High School Corridor Flooring Projects, $29,535. Page seven, guaranteed roof, the roof replacement at the middle school, $121,659. Also on page seven, High Point Networks, we received in our 378 laptop units an amount of $240,229. On page 12, Highway Improvement Incorporated, Asphalt Seal Coating at Brandon Valley Air Media School, $23,182. And then also on page 12, Pesca Constructions, the Sparta Elementary Payment Number Five, $1,563,907. Total bills presented to you for your approval was $2,631,286. The advanced payments breakdown has shown $6,240. Pay vouchers, we had $40,141 of regular pay vouchers, $10,440 of cellphone stipends, $4,530 of distance learning pay vouchers, and $5,943 of CPI train pay vouchers. $103,450 of foot service bills. Questions on anything in particular?
Hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the bills and claims as presented tonight. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lundberg.
Okay, real quickly, the cash report for the month of August, $24,853,000 coming into the month. We had receipts of $2,898,000 and disbursements of $4,787,000, leaving $22,964,649 at the end of August, of which 6.3 million was in the general fund, 2.2 million in the capital fund, $937,000 in the special education fund, $18,000 in the bond redemption fund, $49,786 in the enterprise fund, and $13.4 million in the capital project fund. The $2,898,000 of receipts was itemized on the next two pages. Following that is an investment report of $11,296,000, a CD of $1 million, and then $10,216,000 of U.S. Treasuries. Payroll for the month of August was $1,626,729. Trust and Agency Report at the end of August showed that we had $134,324 in amounts held for other organizations. Lastly, the Capital Projects Statement at the end of August is there for your review. If you look right in the middle of that page, you can see the construction cost of $14,155,000 budgeted. Actual is $2,527,000. Then you include the 1.5 million that we're paying tonight. Would be a total of $4 million paid to the contractor for the base contract, which would be about 28% of the total contract. And we're about six months into the project of an 18-month project. That's all I had, unless there was any questions.
Mr. Lundberg?
Question? The pension fund, obviously, is no longer in existence because of that statutory requirement that took it out, the taxing authority part. How long does that stay in our cash report for this fiscal year or fiscal years to come? Can you comment on that?
It stays in there long enough for me to figure out how to get that column out of my spreadsheet.
I'll take that.
That's it. That's the total answer to that.
Alright, thank you.
Every time I do that, it's a rush to get it in, and I never can figure out how to get that column out of there.
You don't want me to help you with it because it would all be gone. Any more questions for Mr. Lundberg on the financial report? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented, please. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That takes... Thank you very much. That takes us to our general business items section. Administration report, Superintendent Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to provide you an update here this evening. Just want to speak to our elementary school construction timeline and process where we're at. Would note that the exterior walls are really going up. If you've been down or by there, you would note that the precast panels are going up on the gymnasium, and you can see the outline of the BV that'll be on the side of the building that will later be painted in black, so all of that continues. Wanted to just note that the park expense agreement, that shared agreement that we have with the city of Sioux Falls, has been executed. $336,823 is the total amount on that agreement. And we do the work, or the contractor does the work, we pay the bill, and then we submit for reimbursement from them in accordance to that agreement, so an item to note. Also, just want to note that we will be kicking off the Boundary Line Committee process here later this month, and we'll walk through that here shortly. So at this point in time, we remain on track and on budget, and certainly hope that it stays that way as we continue to move through the fall of the year. Also want to speak to the staffing of our elementary school. So we'll post in October a general posting for individuals that are interested in seeking a transfer from their current building assignment to the new elementary school. So that'll be open in general for staff to submit letters of interest at that point in time. Then in January, we will process those internal requests and make some staffing decisions internally. And then ultimately, in February is typically our timeline when we approve new positions for the upcoming school year, and that'll also be included in the staffing of this elementary school. It's important to note that we, in no way, shape, or form, want all new staff members to the Brandon Valley School District in that elementary school. So we'll want to take some staff or have some staff reassigned from their current building to that elementary building as we move forward. So there'll be a nice mix there. So that's the general, or I should say, high-level overview of the timeline regarding our staffing strategy, working with Principal Palmer in that timeline and through those decisions. I want to provide you a quick update on the elementary school boundary committee process. So objectives of this process, we want to minimize student impact, we want to proactively manage student growth, and we also want to establish boundaries for future growth. So what we're hoping that this committee is able to do is to develop an elementary boundary for next school year, specifically with the bringing on of Sparta Elementary down south, and then also develop a preliminary boundary concept for BV Vision 2040. I think we're really set up nicely to look forward to the next 15 or 20 years and establish boundary lines, or at least some preliminary ideas on where boundary lines may be when we bring an east-side elementary on, as well as a west-side elementary, so we know what we're doing before we're doing it.
Do you speak to... Who makes up the committee or how they were selected?
Sure. Absolutely. So what we have, that committee consists of, obviously, myself. Administration is invited to attend, but also there are two parent representatives from each of the elementary buildings. Those individuals, I sought recommendations from the building principals for those individuals. They provide them to me. I then kick out to that group and ask them to join me at those respective meeting dates. So representation from each respective building, parent representation from each respective building. So we'll have a couple of committee meetings as we work through the current boundary lines, what we believe are a starting point for the boundary changes, and then ultimately, a big vision of BV Vision 2040 when you have all of those elementary schools and how those boundaries look. We'll work through that. Also, I will be attending Fred Assam Elementary PTA meeting on October 6th specifically because, quite frankly, this change will have a substantial impact on Fred Assam Elementary in a far greater way than any other elementary school. To be very frank, that school will see 95% of the impact in terms of how the boundary is impacted. So all of the other school boundaries will see very little impact. Valley Springs, the south side, the south end of the Valley Springs Elementary boundary could see a little impact if we take it all the way extending east and west to the state line. But the number of people that live in that portion of the district is just very small. So it's important to note that that's why we're going to Fred Assam Elementary to their PTA meeting because it'll have a substantial impact on their boundary. We'll certainly provide an update to the Board of Education in October. Also plan on having an informational meeting for any parent that's interested in the month of October to provide an update on where we're at and seek their insight and opinion into where we are landing. And then ultimately, a board report and approval hopefully by November so that we can begin to message and communicate to those families that will see those changes. Your boundary will change next year. You'll be going to this school. And being timely in those communications as we move forward, and also establish transportation services and those types of things for the following year. No real change to our enrollment. There's a little bit of in and out as we work through this first part of September here, but we'll have a formal or an official enrollment count last Friday of September, and that is the day that outlines the number of students that you are paid for for the school year. So that's an important date to note. A couple of COVID-19 pandemic update and impact items I just want to note. Overall, things are going as well as could be expected. Of course, we have challenges, and we work through those on a daily basis, but overall, really, really, really happy with the way that our plan has worked and the cooperation that our families are giving us and our students are giving us. Overall, it's going very well and about as well as could be expected. Challenges, specific challenges that I would note. Close contact identification at the high school and the middle school because of the way that the school day and the schedules are established are a significant challenge. That is a significant challenge that we are continually working through and looking at. I would note that we're going to be engaging our teachers' association, our middle school and high school teachers, and our respective stakeholders at the middle school and high school level over the course of the next couple of weeks to determine if there is a strategy or something that we can do to improve or reduce, greatly reduce, the potential for close contact identification. So that's an item that I would tell you is coming, but we obviously need to engage our stakeholders, gather feedback and insight, and see what the options or the potential tweaks are to help that area.
When you say identification, are we having a hard time identifying who's in close contact with each other? Or what are you...
Saying that if you have a positive COVID case at the high school, generally speaking, you're running between 25 and 30 identified close contacts. Those kids, those 25 to 30, are out for 14 days, cannot test out of quarantine. Our pandemic plan says that we take the recommendations of public health officials and institute them, and that's a recommendation from the Department of Public Health, as well as the South Dakota High School Activities Association. Their return plan clearly outlines if you're identified as a close contact and verified, you're out for 14 days, no questions asked. So that's... It's not that we have any problems identifying them. It's actually quite easy to identify them. Correct. The issue is the identification of how many there are and the numbers, for lack of a better phrase.
And so people understand, even though we've done, bought the plastic, put up all the stuff, unless the State Department of Health changes things or whatever, even though you put all those pieces in place, you still get a 14-day... If you didn't have any of those things in place, it's 14 days. If you have all those things in place, it's 14 days.
Correct.
I mean, so it's really kind of... It doesn't really help us out. I don't mean that. I'm not trying to bash them. I'm just saying.
So the CDC guidance regarding the identification of close contacts and the verbiage associated with that changed between the middle of July when guidance came out and then the beginning of August. It was altered. So what I would say is, all of the mitigation strategies we have in place are probably the reason that our plan is being as successful as it is. But in terms of that specific issue and close contacts, the Department of Health has zero wiggle room in terms of those mitigation strategies mattering in terms of identifying close contacts. They matter in terms of reduction of spread and keeping people healthy, but not on that specific issue.
And we don't... So people understand a typical classroom out there, it's elementary, high school, whatever, it's just really impossible.
A typical classroom, high school, elementary, doesn't matter. It's just really hard to get them six feet apart.
Yeah, we're getting better and better at it all the time, but it is very challenging.
You know, just the sheer, the square footage makes it difficult.
Correct. Yeah, there will be no change, and there is nothing necessitating a change at elementary or intermediate school because of the way that we've structured the days. We've been able to cohort-isolate those kids to a great degree. So the traditional day for them is, you know, you might see three close contacts potentially, maybe a few more, but most of the time it's cohort-isolated. It's a non-issue. At the middle school and high school, it's just a real challenge. So we'll continue to work through that. What I can tell you is, that will be a process where we engage stakeholders, and if we need to do something, it will be done through a very thoughtful process where we engage stakeholders, ask for feedback and insight before bringing you a recommendation or a potential pivot, as we like to say. So again, continue to work through those items and evaluate potential options. Staffing shortages. This is another significant challenge. Close contact is an item associated with staffing shortage. You, as a school board, have the ability to designate all staff as essential workers or critical infrastructure essential workers. And what that does is that allows a staff member that is identified as a close contact to continue to come to work, but they have to be masked. They have... Excuse me? Masked, temp-checked twice a day, and in the event that they develop symptoms, they have to automatically leave immediately. We are not there yet, but I would tell you we will get there because of staffing shortages and issues associated with it. Quite frankly, I don't want to cross that bridge until it's absolutely necessary for us to cross that bridge or close schools. So staffing shortages continues to be a challenging issue that we work through, and I would assume that we will be dealing with the essential worker designation in coming meetings at some point in time. So those items to note as challenges. Some very positive impacts, you know, the... There are some really positive things in terms of processes, et cetera, that can come and will come from our navigation of the pandemic. I'm going to give you an example. Back-to-school strategy for kindergarteners. So you think about those families that have, that are bringing their five-year-old to school for the very first time, and you think about that first day of school. They came to the open house, they dropped their bag off, but just hundreds and hundreds of people, thousands at some of our bigger schools, a thousand, you know, plus people at our elementary schools, and those little five-year-olds, how overwhelming it is. For those of you that have ever seen it, there are tears, and there is, you know, it's tough. It's tough. So a real positive from COVID has been, we spent the first three days with staggered welcomes to our kindergarten kiddos and their families. So for example, I have a kindergartner at Robert Bennett Elementary. On Thursday at 2:00 p.m., we were able to come to the school, and we had 30 minutes to walk around the school, look at the school, meet the teacher, talk about what the school and the classroom was going to look like and how the day was going to work. And the feedback we've received from our kindergarten teachers, our kindergarten administration, our elementary administration, and our families has been extremely positive for that making that first day when they came a far greater experience. So that's something we'll consider as we move forward. So that was a real positive. Another positive, laser focus on curriculum alignment, scope, and sequence because, as we've talked about previously, we have to be very agile. We have to be able to move in and out. We have kiddos in an elementary classroom, for example, that, let's say their mom or dad tested positive, so they're a close contact, so they're out for 14 days. They have to be able to pivot out into distance learning and utilize those platforms. So a laser-like focus on curriculum alignment, scope, and sequence is really beneficial to us in terms of our curriculum standards alignment, et cetera. Increased and improved instructional technology and technology skills, you know, that's one that's just kind of been thrust upon us. But when we talk about how we accept work, like at the elementary level, for example, we maybe were fragmented in the past on if someone utilized a digital platform to accept work. Now we're standardized in CSOW as an example. Google Classroom is another example, grades five through 12 where we're standardized. So the increased and improved instructional technology and technology skills by our staff because of the situation is definitely a benefit. So those are some real positive impacts that have occurred from COVID. Message. The message has been, continues to be, and needs to be, if you do not feel well, stay home. If you are exhibiting symptoms on-site as a student, you are masked, you are isolated, you are assessed by our student health professionals, our school nurses, and if they deem that you go home, you go home. If you have a symptom because we are in community substantial spread in Minnehaha County, so if you have a sore throat or you have a symptom of COVID, fever, headache, there's 16 or 17 of them. If you're exhibiting a symptom because we are in substantial spread, you are sent home. So the message to our families, and we're getting better at it. Every day that goes by, we are getting better at it. If your child does not feel well, stay home. Because if you stay home, and the next day you feel better, and you come back and you can pass those screening processes, no doctor's note is necessary, none of those things. So the message, again, if you do not feel well, stay home. A large-scale item related to COVID that was just recently announced. Governor Noem has provided $75 million to South Dakota schools. Our estimated allocation is in the $2.3 million range. Funds must be expended by December 30th, 2020. An additional information will be shared in the near future. I know Business Manager Lundberg has webinars, informational sessions set up with the Department of Education and Finance on that coronavirus relief fund. So more information will be coming regarding the 2.3. But we certainly appreciate the additional revenue to help us as we work through COVID. Couple calendar items to note. Intermediate and middle school parent-teacher conferences. These parent-teacher conferences for all schools will be held via distance format. Monday, September 28th is intermediate school and middle school parent-teacher conferences. I believe we are offering Zoom and/or phone conferences at the intermediate and middle school level. And then also, on Tuesday, September 29th, we have parent-teacher conferences. They will also be held via distance. At the elementary level, we are offering Zoom or phone call conferences. And at the high school level, we are offering phone conferences. So those are... That's our approach, to engage with our parents in some critical conversations regarding educational programming of our kiddos. No school Friday, October 2nd for our comp day. Monday, October 12th, no school scheduled for in-service. With that, certainly entertaining. Any questions you have?
First of all, happy homecoming week. I know it's been a different week, but impressed by how it's still going forward, and everyone's enjoying all the great dress-up days. Back to the COVID update. So just to make sure very clear on this, it's a close contact issue, not a COVID issue that we're having. I think that's just something we want to make very clear, correct? This is not a COVID issue. This is a close contact issue. I think we have a lot of parents that hear that just because they're wearing masks or behind shields, and they're still going to get close contact, so they're thinking about, well, then why even wear the mask? But it's because we're wearing the mask and because we have the shields that we don't have, or we would lead to believe that we don't have the COVID issue. Yes, we still have close contacts because of the rules being changed in the middle of the game. Please don't take away all the things that we've put in place. Let's keep those going. But it's not a COVID issue at this time. It's a close contact issue. Correct?
Minimal number of positive cases. Handfuls is what I would say. And I would also tell you that in the event that there is a COVID exposure in your school building, you receive notification from the school regarding the positive, the potential exposure to COVID. So what I can say is, if we have a positive case that was, is confirmed, is in the school building during the school day, we are sending a message to that building, the building level, saying, "There was COVID in the school building on this date," or "There was COVID in the school building." If your child was a close contact, you have been informed, is our process. At this point in time, we are not seeing spread within our close contacts. It's that we're not seeing symptoms developed. Generally speaking, it's... That is not been the issue. The issue has been the number of close contacts that we identify, and then the fact that they're out for 14 days at home with no symptoms. And you can about imagine how frustrating that is for students and parents. So that's when I say, that's the issue.
Absolutely. And then you brought up the shortages in staff, and when that goes along with the denotation of essential, which is hard because I think right now we're all thinking that every teacher and staff is essential. I mean, that's how we're getting to the point that we're at. So in our hearts, know that you're essential, and thank you for everything that you're doing. So I think just speaking to that, I know we've discussed that when we get there, it's not like we're holding that back, but we want to make sure we're taking care of the teachers and the staff and do the best that we can in that instance.
Absolutely. I think it's just best that we do our due diligence and wait as long as possible because an individual that's been deemed in close contact is instructed to, recommended by DOH to quarantine for 14 days. They're doing that for a purpose, and it's to reduce spread and keep people healthy. So the longer we can wait before we have to have to make that move, it's just in our best interest. But you will eventually run into a situation where it's closed schools because you can't staff them or utilize close contacts to continue to work.
Okay. So finally, I hate to put you on the spot. So teachers have gone through a lot of change this year? a lot of change this year. Exciting that Sparta is going to open it up. Some are, you know, really excited because that's closer to home, it's where they want to be. But for others who might be thinking, oh, what if I get pushed there, or maybe they don't want to go there, it's more change. Anything that you would want to tell them or have them go to address those fears or concerns just in a year of change?
Sure. First and foremost, we've always asked our teachers that are wanting a transfer of some sort to tell us before there's even an opening. They can submit that letter to me, just be detailed in the, the building, the grade level, those types of things. They can do that even before there are openings that exist. President Ciliason, President of the BVA, and I have had conversation about that very thing. They're very, very good at messaging that to, to their teaching staff. I guess what I would note is that in terms of assignment, I would encourage those that want to transfer to Sparta Elementary to put in their request to transfer. With that, with that being said, assignment is ultimately an administrative function and they could be transferred. However, we don't want to transfer people to where they don't want to be unless it's absolutely necessary. So yeah, put their, put their transfer in if they'd like to get, get down there, or if they'd like to get to a different building. I would always suggest that they put in a transfer request earlier in the school year and be as specific as possible within their transfer request because things begin to move very quickly, specifically in the spring of the year. Once you get past February, March, and you'll have an opening and then you're hiring for a position, so you've just interviewed 20 people, you might hire out of that pool. So we don't always post internally once we get later into the spring, so it's, it's best if they just let us know early. Of course, if they have any questions about that, they can certainly contact me.
Jared, another, I totally support and agree. I think making, I think people are getting, get confused. And I like the fact that we say this publicly in the board meeting, and we need to say it over and over and over. When there's something, we communicate with the parents of the kids at that school, and only that school, and only those kids, and only those close contacts, because we don't need to create some sort of a, you know, and so if you're used to having, like, I have a kid in college, well, you've got a dashboard to check. Well, that's a whole different deal because we're dealing with adults and we got parents, and that's their way, and they're not going to reach out in order that we expect them to or whatever. We're dealing with children that are much younger, and so we are very good, and I applaud you guys, you're very good about communicating specifically with that school, specifically with those parents, and we don't need to put together a dashboard with all these numbers because in many ways, that's just going to be more confusing. I, if I'm a parent, I just want to know, is it in my school, is it in my kid's classroom? If not, the next time I get to school, we move on. And so I think some people want to spread, you know, get the numbers into all this, and we don't need them. If it's not in your kid's classroom at the, at the elementary level, you don't need it.
So I'll speak to two things. If there's a positive confirmed case in a school building, that whole school receives a message that says there was a positive COVID case exposure in your school. Before that letter goes out, we make personal phone calls to those individuals that are presumptive close contacts, meaning you are within six feet for 15 minutes or longer, you're going to need to quarantine for 14 days. The Department of Health is going to be calling you in the coming days. So those communications ensure transparency, is what I would say.
Yes.
The, the problem with dashboards, quite frankly, is you have numbers in dashboards that were never in school. And I'll use this as an example. So the, the weekend occurred here, we didn't have school on Monday. Okay? A child, a child doesn't come to school on Tuesday because they're not feeling well. Okay? Mom and dad call and say, we have a positive COVID test on Wednesday. We say, okay. So when we, when we do our investigation, we step back. Monday, they weren't feeling well, we didn't have school anyway. Tuesday, they weren't feeling well. Wednesday, they got their test. We go two days back. You have to go two days before they started having symptoms. That's a Saturday or a Sunday, depending on what, whether it was Monday or Tuesday when the symptoms started. They were never in school. There is no reason for us to communicate to that, that school building that there was a positive COVID exposure because there was never COVID in the school. However, on your dashboard, if you have a total number of cases, it shows up. And we are finding that that happens on a fairly regular basis where the individuals weren't ever in school, but it's a positive case. So that, that's part of the reason that we don't want to do dashboards.
Totally agree. Totally agree. Well, and at the college level, they're there. They're on campus, they're in the dorm, you know, they're not away. But yeah, it just, I think some people get confused. They see it at the one level, wonder why not at the other level, but it doesn't really serve our purpose. Thank you.
Jared, I got one question to ask. Example, say somebody in high school broke with it and there is a, okay, so those around he or she have to be quarantined for two weeks. All right. He or she that are being quarantined also have brothers or sisters in elementary. Are those kids then required to?
No. Being a close contact to a close contact does not exclude you from school.
Anything else for Superintendent Larson tonight? It all gets a little overwhelming, so thank you for asking the questions. And again, thank you for the explanations. And for those listening, thank you for understanding the rationale behind those. So Mr. Lundberg, anything additional tonight? Thank you. Mr. Schluckway or Mr. Freckin, I bet they're busy.
Homecoming coronation.
Mr. Thorson, anything tonight? Mrs. Nelson, anything? Mr. Skipstead or Mr. Pearson?
Okay.
Mr. Bab is not here.
He's walking his daughter down for coronation, I believe.
Oh. See, Mrs. Palmer, anything? Mrs. Nelson, anything tonight? Okay. And we do not have any board policy. I know that we're disappointed about that, but we will move on. That takes us to our general business items, numbers one through four. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
Just because, what's the Prosper School? Renee, what's, what is that?
Um, hey, now you put me on the spot. It's the autism school, correct?
It's one of the new programs that TeachWell has developed as an offset to some of the other types of programming that we may utilize from other organizations that's more costly, whether it be specialized school for autism or Children's Home Society Day placements or those.
Is this part of what they're doing across the street?
Yes.
Yes.
The academy is actually, and I know this is probably out of order of how we're supposed to do things, but the academy and the old Boys and Girl Scouts, Boys and Girls Club is the K, I believe it's K-12. And then in the old Beatle School, the old brick building, that's where our more specialized, smaller places.
The specialized programs are there.
The autistic, you know, the Prosper program, some of the other programs where those kids, we just didn't think it was real smart to put them all in the general population. We needed to keep them separated out, so.
Yeah. Totally get that. I just, I'd not seen that name before.
And, and it's a new program, and Brian Ost, we hired him back. If you guys remember, Brian used to work for ASBSD, and then he's now with TeachWell. But I would encourage you, if you haven't been down there for a while, it's probably time to go check it out. So it's very, it's impressive. So, all right. Sorry, off topic. General business items, one through four. I entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Personnel items, one through five. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Couple information only there. There's some building permit applications there also for your review. Couple thank you notes for your review. That takes us to formal board reports. Does anyone have one that they would like to share? Think we already did the TeachWell one. We meet tomorrow night. We're waiting for our, to find out who our new board member is going to be from West Central. We haven't figured that out yet, so. Since I don't hear anybody else wanting to share anything tonight, I, that takes us to the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
You got yours?